Good evening, I'd like to reconvene City Council Success Agency to the Westminster redevelopment Agency meeting right now, seven twenty-seven P M, Wednesday, February twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one. Roll call please.
Yes, Mayor Todd?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Doe?
I'm here.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
And Councilmember Manzo?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, salute to the flat will be met high and invocation will be City Attorney. So please stand and put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. A glad allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. City Attorney? City Attorney, is anywhere that you can unmute?
Sorry about that. Okay. Father in heaven, we thank you for the opportunity to come together and to be able to come as council and staff and as the public and to come and discuss issues of public importance. And we ask that you would be here with us and help us to be wise in our discussions and in our decision-making, help each person here, Lord, to make a good, to be good in their participation and in helping to make these wise decisions for the benefit of the community, for the citizens, and for this county. We commit the time to you in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, City Attorney. And is any report from our City Attorney?
There's nothing to report from closed session.
Thank you, expert communication? None? And any report from City Club?
Yes, Mayor, so I'd just like to announce that item five point two has been withdrawn from the agenda, so it will not be discussed tonight. And we also have emergency services coordinator, Robert Acosta, who'll be providing another COVID-19 update.
Thank you, please.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
No, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Todd, council and city staff. I've been asked to provide an update for the Operation Independence and the COVID response again. As everybody's probably aware, COVID numbers nationally and in the state of California and more specifically in Orange County continue to steadily drop. This is good news. The state recently modified the benchmarks for youth sports. That's probably the biggest change over the last, since the last report. Recently, Orange County made a key benchmark for the daily case count, allowing youth sports. Currently, Orange County is at eleven point nine cases per hundred thousand citizens. This allows certain youth sports to start playing competitively February twenty-sixth, that's this Friday. We're expecting a formal and detailed guidance from the Orange County Healthcare Agency in the next day or two. Internally, the city has had one case since the last report. And to date, we still have zero cases of confirmed workplace transmission. I spoke with that one case shortly before this meeting and the individual's healing nicely and recovering and should be back to work in the next few days. Operation Independence, as you are aware, is tasked with delivering the vaccines. They have two primary challenges, vaccine supply and workforce for the pods. Due to the extreme weather events in the Midwest, the vaccine has met some supply shortages. This has resulted in a temporary closing of the county's pod sites, or most of the county's pod sites. The supply chain is slowly recovering and the vaccinations are starting back up again, but the primary focus is going to be on the, on those that need to receive their second dose. The other challenge is staffing. The pods are staffed with a combination of county employees, community volunteers, and city workers. The county has asked every city to provide a limited workforce to staff the pods. The city of Westminster was initially asked to provide approximately four hundred hours of work over approximately the next six-month period. The city of Westminster is doing its part, as most cities are, and we're providing employees to staff the pods. The employee costs are reimbursable, are fully reimbursable through FEMA Recovery App. Community members that are wishing to volunteer can do so at one O C dot com. Getting a vaccine, Athena is still the best way for residents to virtually get in line for their turn. Residents and employees of Orange County can register at Athena dot com or on the Athena app. It's available in English, Vietnamese, and Spanish. The city is still planning for mobile pods. Mobile pods are designed to serve the senior citizens of the city that they're in. The mobile prod, mobile pod program is managed by the healthcare agency and also the incident management team. The city staff doesn't control when or where the pods will occur, but we've made it clear to the incident management team that we're ready to go if we get the green light. We have, we have a site ready and we have over four hundred residents signed up and ready to go. We will be able to get mobilized in very short order. Testing. Orange County continues a robust testing system and the city of Westminster maintains a testing clinic at City Hall, continues to be available Monday, Wednesday, and Saturday from nine to three. And since the last report, we've expanded the hours to include Thursdays and Fridays. Those are from eleven thirty to six. So our testing pod now offers testing five days a week. Signups are requested and can be done so on, on the Orange County Healthcare Agency's website. Testing is important, as this, this helps indicate what the positivity rate is and we need to see the positivity rate drop so we can progress through the tiers. The COVID guidelines and vaccine response are very dynamic. As information becomes available to the various healthcare agencies, they modify their recommendations. An example of that would be the, the modification of the youth sports. We make every effort to stay informed of these changes and we can keep compliant to the current guidelines. The healthcare agency also does a very good job of communicating with us, the emergency managers and emergency coordinators via multiple phone calls and Zoom calls a week. End of report, I'm available for any questions.
I really appreciate with your report and really appreciate that you and our city staff had been working on a mobile pod in our city. And we have heard about that, but may ask you, is there any hope that we can have that pretty soon or it will take some time, probably like a couple of weeks or sooner than that? Because I receive a lot of call from our resident, especially the seniors.
So Mayor Todd, that's a good question, that's a sixty-four thousand dollar question and most of the cities want one. I will tell you that there's no ambiguity there. Well, the incident management team in the, in the Orange County Healthcare Agency are well aware that not only are we desirable, but our community service section has, community service people have done an excellent job to acquire that list, have emails for them, addresses, and we're, we made arrangements with various community service agencies to provide transportation. We, Westminster's, I believe, is ahead of the ballgame to, to, to really start up a pod and have a client list ready to show up. So I keep knocking on the door and picking up the phone and making the phone calls and, and it's, it's out of our control other than to just let them know we're ready to go.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question for, for Robert.
Please.
Thank you, Mayor. How is our testing, is our testing numbers that we're doing at the civic center, are they consistent? Are they up or they down, you know? The ones that we're doing at this civic center site?
No, I'm not, I'm not aware of what, exactly what our numbers are. That's, that's actually a good question and probably some valuable information and I'll make sure that I acquire that and I'll report back to the team and, and our staff. All right, thank you.
All right, if we don't have any question, I'd like to thanks, Director. Yeah. Mr. Acosta for his report. Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, we have oral communication.
Yes, so this is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the city council regarding any items on the agenda or non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction, except for public hearing. I did not receive any ecomments, so at this time, if anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand. Okay, we have Terry Rains. And again, speakers get five minutes to speak. Terry, you with us?
Good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster. Thank you, Councilman Doe, for requesting a report on the city's audit firm history, item three point three. Westminster has used the same audit firm for seventeen years with only one informal RFP done almost eleven years ago. I don't know of any other local cities that have not changed firms at least once in that time period. I prepared an email to report to staff on Monday showing what audit firm each city in Orange County used for their most recent CAFR. With White Nelson Deal Evans joining them, Clifton Larson Allen now serves thirteen Orange County cities. Time will tell if the merger has any impact on the company's operations, managing partners, and support staff. There are only a handful of highly regarded public agency audit firms in Orange County. As a former finance professional, I know changing auditors can be a real headache for staff. Even changing managing partners within the same firm is required by government code section one-two-four-one-zero dot six B can be a challenge, but the city needs to see what options are out there. Clifton Larson Allen may still be the best choice for Westminster, but we need to undertake a full-scale competitive selection process to know for sure. At first glance, a mid-year budget review seems promising, item three point four. The city's sales tax consultant, H D L, anticipates fiscal year twenty-twenty-one receipts will be slightly above fiscal year nineteen-twenty numbers, but that projection is based on only four months of actual receipts, not six. And the charge in the staff report only go through December, not September, not December. The actuals may come in lower than projected due to the county going back to the most restricted purple tier in November and another total lockdown in early December, which only recently ended. During the budget session last year, one of my suggestions was to lower the property tax revenue budget. For the county of Orange Tax Ledger, property tax revenue is projected to come in about four hundred thousand lower than budget. I guess I was right. I would like to request again that all budget updates, not just the mid-year review, be presented during regular city council meetings. The public deserves to get the same quarterly updates as the council does. Thank you for providing the monthly city net dashboard report to council and hopefully to the homelessness task force as well. January outreach numbers were low. Again, can the city please request these modifications to the city net report? Number one, show monthly outreach numbers for, for two years instead of lumping them into quarterly numbers. Two, show the details of every single outreach encounter for the current month, not just highlights of a few. Reporting all encounters would also provide data about shelter and housing refusals, multiple outreach attempts per person, et cetera. And three, show both monthly and cumulative shelter placements and add monthly and cumulative permanent housing placements. Incorporating these changes will greatly assist the city and our homelessness task force in better understanding our homelessness issue and help guide everyone toward finding the most effective solutions. City Net and the PD already have this data, so incorporating it into these monthly reports should not be difficult. I hope Councilman Ho will, Councilwoman Ho will tell us why she removed item five point two from the agenda. I support establishing an outdoor shared business experience in Little Saigon, as long as all businesses in the city have a chance to participate, not just those in Little Saigon, and that it does not cost the city any money. Option one seems like the easiest location to move forward with, but option two is a more desirable location with Bolsa Avenue frontage. Regarding item six point one, the commercial eviction urgency ordinance, I am still reeling from the lengthy discussion on this topic during the last council meeting. It literally made my brain hurt. I felt bad watching Christian try to extract cohesive direction from that cluster, you know what? The original ordinance twenty-five sixty-five covered both residential and commercial evictions. In August, A B thirty-eighty-eight preempted the city's ability to enact its own residential eviction protections. So why don't tonight's amendment strike residential language from the original ordinance altogether, I wonder? The city imposing regulations on rent catch-up between commercial landlords and tenants is a slippery slope we do not want to be on. At the last meeting, the city attorney said he would check to see if we could even extend it out as far as Councilwoman Ho wants, twenty-two months, but the staff report doesn't address his research. Landlords are business owners too. They still have to pay mortgages and other expenses related to their properties. I foresee lawsuits naming the city as a defendant if the city mandates up to twenty-two months for tenants to pay their back rent. My vote would be to leave it alone at a hundred and twenty days or maybe up to six or twelve months, but certainly not twenty-two months. Best wish just to Chief Lauterback in his new job as chief of police in his hometown of Cypress. And lastly, another update, the DA's office confirmed Friday that the investigation into Councilwoman Ho's fraudulent vote center is still ongoing, now one hundred and fourteen days into it. So stay tuned, thank you.
Thank you. Last call for speakers. There are no additional speakers.
All right, so I'd like to close oral communication because we don't have any other speaker at this time. Next, we have consent calendar. Oh, matter is, listener, the consent calendar, I consider routine, maybe approved by a single motion, followed by roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council or staff request a specific items be removed from the consent calendar for a separate action or discussion.
Excuse me, Mayor? Oh, sorry. I don't know if I went first or, Councilman Doe, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. For transparency purposes, I'd like to pull item three point four for me.
All right, so item three point four is, is pull, okay?
Because remember though? And point three, three point five, three point six, please?
Okay, so may someone else so make a motion to approve, but item three point three, three point four, three point five, am I correct? And?
Three point six.
Six.
I'm sorry, so was it just three point, it was just three point three and three point six from, for you? Yeah, I have three point three, three point four, and three point six, not three point five.
Three point five.
Oh, you wanted to pull three point five as well? Okay.
Okay. So I'd like to move to approve.
A second.
Okay, the, the slide.
To be clear, removing the?
Four, three, four, five, and three, four, six. We have a motion on second floor. What? Yeah.
Let me just clarify the motion. Is the motion to, to pull these items or is the motion to move the balance?
No, the motion to approve only, only two item on the consent, three point one and three point two, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct. I do have a hand raised under the attendees right now, which the members of the public have the ability to pull an item as well, so I can just check if that he wants to do. Ty Jody, you looking to pull an item?
No, this is Jody. I've actually been waiting to be let into the meeting on Zoom, so I did not have my opportunity to speak. Now, I do want to speak regarding item three point six. Can I please be allowed?
I think that we have to, we have to, oh, is she not publicly, oh, City Attorney, in that kind of circumstance, but we have to, we have to take the vote first, right? We have to vote first.
I, I, I think, was, she was not let in, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. She was not in the meeting. Yeah, she, she wasn't in during the time of public comments and?
But I was waiting.
Okay, since your comments, your comments don't concern items three point one or two, correct?
Right, my comments are regarding three point six, so I'm just asking.
So let's, let's, let's take the vote to approve three point one and three point two. And then allow her to speak. And then, and then we can take the other items.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good, all right. All right, so to clarify, that was a motion made by Mayor Todd, seconded by Councilmember Ho to approve items three point one and three point two from the consent calendar and the rest are pulled for separate discussion.
Correct.
Okay, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Todd?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
And I would like to invite Ms. Jody Boy to speak on item three point six, am I right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. Ms. Boyd, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and also to the City Attorney to allow me to speak. This is regarding item three point six, the city net homeless services dashboard. And I, I would like to have a little bit more information where the numbers behind the numbers are coming from. For example, in, on the January dashboard, it's showing that there were only forty-two outreach contacts and, which is the lowest number, I think, ever. It does indicate that of the forty-two outreach contacts and five line calls, there were twelve actual street exits. I would like to know of the street exits, what shelters they were, you know, going to. I would also like to have a little bit more visibility into the actual outreach locations. Some of them are all blended together, such as on the eleventh, the thirteenth, and the twenty-seventh. And in fact, the eleventh seems a little truncated, so we don't really have good insight into a total of how many people at each of these locations was encountered. And it kind of plays also into our highlights of the recent street exits. We only have two highlighted, the one on the twenty-first and one back on the eighth, which do not correlate into the total number of twelve street exits. We also don't have insight into the forty-two outreach contacts and outreach line calls, which I guess might be calls inbound. But whether we have encountered these people before, when they were encountered, were they given a post, postcard or any information regarding just call two-one-one when you're ready? These are the services that we can offer you. Also, I followed up with ACTA regarding the possibility of posting some posters regarding two-one-one and to, you know, for people to call two-one-one and these are some of the services that they can get and placing those posters on the city bus shelters, some of them around these key areas. And I was told that each city does have somebody regarding a liaison regarding the postings of things at their city bus shelters. So I, these are all things that I think we could easily implement to have better clarity and insight as we move forward to truly help people and solve the problem of homelessness in Westminster. Thank you.
All right, before I invite Deputy Chief of Police, I'm still to respond, I'd like to ask Councilmember Doe, you have any other concerns regarding this item? Councilmember Doe, can you unmute?
I just want to hear the staff report.
Okay, that's good. So may I have Deputy Chief up still? You hear me?
All right, good evening. I'm going to let Commander Kevin McCormick speak on that since he's been working closely with the homeless liaison officers and he can speak regarding the city net reports.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and the City Council. In regards to the city net reports, that is the data that they collect when they're out in the field without our homeless liaison officers present. So my recommendation would be, I can, I can set up a time where they can attend a city council meeting and break down all that data for you in terms of where all those numbers belong. One of the things we're doing at a police department level with our homeless liaison officers, if we, we have devised a new software that we're using, our homeless liaison officers have it in their city-issued cell phones, so when they contact people out in the field, they're entering it right then and there into their cell phones, which create a report, which breaks a lot of the demographics down as terms of who we're contacting, the background of these folks, whether or not they want services or they're accepting services, or any shelters they might go to, and exactly where they're being located at. So if you like, I can arrange to have a city net at a future council meeting. That way, they can explain to you their data and how they have it devised here in their monthly dashboard.
I really, I really appreciate that. So did you respond to other concern of Ms. Boyhart?
And which one was that, reference to bus stops?
I think so, yeah.
We can look into that. I can have Officer Perez, Officer Brown look into that as soon as they, they've been out this week, so as soon as they return to work, we can look into that, as well as some other things that we're doing. We've also just created a voicemail line for the, for the residents of Westminster as well as business owners, where they can call in directly and leave a voicemail for the homeless liaison officers directly. That way, the, the information is coming straight to them. We'll also be creating an email address that'll be put on our website as well, which will make it a lot easier for the residents and the business owners to contact the homeless liaison officers with questions or concerns.
Yeah, I think a question that for last month, all the number had been really low is, what was the main, what was the main reason?
I'm sorry?
I, I look at a report and, you know, all the number for last month had been pretty low. What was the main reason? Like outreach contact or outreach like car or whatever, street exit, that kind of really low, so what were the main?
The street exits, the, the street exits might be low because of the COVID restrictions they have on the shelters.
Okay.
They, they had the shelters closed in terms of allowing new people in due to the COVID restrictions. Those that have been lifted at most of the shelters, as well as the Yale Navigation Center just opened this past Monday.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commander, I have questions. So this is the city net report that generate every month?
Correct.
Okay, and they sent it to the PD, is that correct?
Yes, they do. They sent it to Officer Perez.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so, you know, I appreciate the next council meeting when we have the city net report, we can have someone from city that can articulate and explain all the data in here. Well, we're greatly appreciated, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Additionally, I just want to add that we're, like Commander McCormick spoke on, we're looking into software that can track our contacts with repeated offenders, so we know who we've given assistance to, what steps have taken, where we're at with that. We're always looking to move the way we can and make it more effective, so we're, we're looking into that. And we're close to hopefully getting this app where officers, each officer's not just homeless liaison officers, but other officers in the field can use, which will, will help us tremendously.
Is there any question or concerns from member of the honest city council?
I just had a, I don't know if this is the proper time for it, but if, it's a good idea from Ms. Jody Boyd about placing this information that can help the homeless population get some help. get some help as far as numbers, emails. They can call, it can help. If that is that we're done with the housing element advertisement on the bus shelters. I think the bus shelters would be very visible to somebody, a homeless person that needs some help. As far as phone numbers or who to contact, if that's, if that's doable.
Yes, sir. And currently, when we contact homeless folks in the city, our homeless liaison officers, our patrol officers and the City Net folks when they are with us, we hand out those information cards to the homeless individuals with a slew of resource phone numbers on there, so that in the future, if they do want assistance, they can contact us. Some of these street exits, if you read in there, indicate that they were, they contacted City Net after the fact on their own, when they decided they wanted services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, one more timeline of thanks, Deputy Chief and Commander for your report. Thank you. So City Council, so may I have a motion to prove this item? So I move for approval?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to prove this item.
Yes, just to clarify, that's to receive and file?
Receive and file.
Yep.
Okay, so mayor, that was made by Mayor Ta, seconded by Councilmember Manzo, receiving father report.
Three point six.
Yes, Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right now, and we have item three point three annual audit services provided to the city of Westminster. May I have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and this is regarding the annual audit consultant that was, who's been doing it for us. And I would like Aaron Bax to go ahead and give us that report, please.
Good evening. So as the staff report says, Dale Evans has been providing our audit services since the fiscal year two thousand two, two thousand three. And we did go out for RFP in two thousand nine. They changed their name or the firm's name changed in two thousand eleven and they merged with Clifton Larson in in this last year. They did perform, Clifton Larson did perform our nineteen-twenty audit. And we had a new managing partner. Government code does require that the managing partner change every six years and this started in thirteen-fourteen. And the annual cost of our audit for the last year was about forty-eight thousand dollars. We are preparing currently an RFP and we will be sending that out in March.
Thank you so much for your report. Any question or concerns from member on the City Council?
Yeah, I yeah, my concern is talking about financial audit, we need to rotate the financial audit firm every mandated by law, but every six months, six years, is that correct?
Of managing partners every six years, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, and then we haven't done that. We've stayed with the same company since twenty, twenty-two thousand three, that's seventeen years, right? I, I would, I would suggest that we need to have a new firm to conduct the financial audit next year. Just, just to have a fresh set of eyes to look into our finance practice.
Okay, we will be sending that out in March, so we can get that started early on and be ready.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, City Council, so may I have action on this item? Only receiving file. Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch them.
I think it was me though, yeah.
Okay, perfect. So that was Councilmember Doe, seconded by Mayor Ta to receive and father report. Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
So next item. Three point four fiscal year twenty to twenty-one budget review two second quarter.
Again, Mayor, this is a budget review or what we sometimes call it mid-year budget review for the, through the second quarter, meaning includes the first and second quarter. And also like Aaron Bax to go ahead and go through the PowerPoint, please.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a short presentation, so I'm going to share my screen. And so this is a review of the general fund revenue and expenditures through second quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-one. The top revenue sources for the city's general fund make up eighty-nine percent of total general fund revenue. Fiscal year twenty twenty-one revenues were originally budgeted at sixty point two million. And the current revised revenue budget is sixty-one point seven million, which includes a one point five million adjustment for COVID cares funding. Nineteen point seven million or thirty-two percent of general fund revenue has been received as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Sales tax and transaction use tax, which is measure SS receipts are remitted to the city after collected by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. The CDTFA. This type table reflects four months of receipts. Projections from the city's sales tax consultant estimate fiscal year twenty twenty-one receipts to be slightly above the actuals received for fiscal year nineteen-twenty. And two point three million higher than budgeted. This is still a very early estimate with only four months of actual receipts. Property tax revenues received are a hundred and eighty-five thousand higher than this time last year. However, based on the estimates from the county of Orange Tax Ledger, this revenue source will come in about four hundred thousand lower than budgeted. And this was an estimate as of twelve thirty-one or December thirty-first. And this is actually less than that as of today. But again, this is an early estimate as most of the revenue from property tax receipts come in December and April. So we know the December amount now, but we won't know the April amount until we receive it. Utility users' taxes sixty-eight thousand less than received through the second quarter fiscal year nineteen-twenty, but in line with the budget. Charges for service are looking positive for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, partly due to the cost recovery study adopted in fiscal year nineteen-twenty. We are in the process of updating the study currently. Receipts to date are lower than the same time last year, however, overall projections to year-end are in line with the budget. General fund expenditures are tracking on budget. Expenditures for the second quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-one are one point five million over the prior fiscal year at this time. This is due to the increase in purse costs and the OCFA contract increase. And this is just a summary of the COVID funding. So the city of Westminster has received eight hundred thousand County Cares Act and one point one million State Cares Act funds, which was used for staffing supplies, signage, business assistance and outreach. We've received three hundred ninety-three thousand County Cares Act for business assistance grants. One point three million community development block grant coronavirus funds for rental assistance, family resource center, senior center and homelessness. And in addition, the city council allocated a million from the Economic Development Fund for small business loans in the amount of twenty thousand each. New legislation proposed by the U.S. House Oversight and Reform Committee included a total of three hundred fifty billion dollars of relief for state and local governments. Staff estimates, estimates if this bill is approved as proposed, Westminster could receive thirteen point four million dollars. At this time, revenue and expenditures are tracking within budget, so no budget adjustment is necessary. The third quarter update will be provided after nine months of revenue and expenditures, so for the period of July one through March thirty-first.
Thank you so much for your report. Any question or concerns from member on the City Council?
I'd just like to thank Aaron for your presentation. Think it's good for the public to see this information. So thank you, Aaron, for the help.
Yeah, I have a question, Aaron. I'm talking about cell tax, even though it's the, we were in a shutdown the past years. The cell tax collection still in line with the, with the budget, is that correct? It looks like it's less than fifty-three thousand.
That's correct. It is still, it's actually higher than the sales taxes projected to be two point what did I say, two point three? Higher than what was budgeted, so about in total between the two, twenty-nine point three million dollars.
Okay, is that like online, online transaction cell tax or is that locally collected?
That's all.
That's everything included?
That's everything, yes.
Okay, cool. Well, thank you very much. Great job. Thank you.
All right, so may I have a motion?
Motion to, to receive and file.
I have a comment.
Please.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Doe for bringing that up. I want to verify certain facts, if I may. Miss Bass. Okay, regarding to the TUT tax, that's the transaction use tax. So from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, the TUT tax captures online sales, right, and regular sales. And you mentioned that and you confirmed that, right? Just regular sales tax, like brick and, from the brick and mortar stores and all. So if, if our, so if our measure SS tax goes away, what do you project? So that means that we're, so what portion of this is from online? Would you shed light on that?
I don't have that in front of me. I do know that the difference between the two is the city gets the online sales directly from the transaction use tax versus on the sales tax side, it goes into the county and state pool and then we get a percentage of our share. But I can, I don't. I'm sorry, I don't have, I'd have to look for that number. I'm not sure which exactly, what exactly is the amount we receive from online.
Aaron, if I may, I thought that number was about eight hundred thousand.
So that's, we did discuss that more than.
Yeah, two, two point four percent, I remember.
Okay, thank you.
You are.
So, so I'm sorry, eight hundred thousand?
Yes, yes, that's based on our percentage of that tax is two point four compared to the entire county.
Okay, so this here says general consumer goods. We're looking at the same graph and so the TUT tax is, let's say, for instance, it went up quite a bit. If we look at, I mean, sales and use tax up there, the graph above, let's just say, compare that to general consumer looking, looking at the bar graph of general consumer goods. We're doing lower, we're doing less than the year before. So, but then according to this bar graph, general consumer goods were able to capture to capture that tax, or shall I say, I would assume that we're capturing a lot of internet sales. And so the difference is quite a bit, right?
Yes, that's, that's.
If, if our TUT tax, the measure SS tax goes away, I'm just like trying to understand, like if measure SS tax goes away. Are we, will we be able to capture internet sales tax?
Only through a percentage of the county and state pools. We would not capture it directly, but we would lose that whole bottom, that whole bottom chart or so over twelve million dollars, not just the internet sales. We didn't lose all of it.
Can I object real quickly and just?
Please, could you?
Yeah, there's two different things going on here. One, you have the sales tax and how much you collect under the normal sales tax for brick and mortar stores, which is one number. Then with respect to the sales tax, if somebody purchases something online, there's a different formula that gets followed. My understanding is we get a lot less than we would as if, under the sales tax, than we would for a brick and mortar purchase. The second issue is the TUT. The fact that we have a TUT, that is a form of a sales tax, it's slightly different, but that one we get a hundred percent of. So that one would fully capture, as long as we have it, it would fully capture one percent, let's say, of an internet sale or one percent of a brick and mortar sale. See, you get the whole thing. But when it comes to their normal sales tax, if it's an online purchase, my understanding is you get a much lower percentage. There's like a county pool, I think, as Aaron had mentioned. I've heard in some places that you get, you know, ten cents on the dollar as compared to what you would get under the a brick and mortar sale when it comes to sales taxes. But Aaron, if you could clarify that maybe.
We get two point four percent of the county pool. So our sales tax in, I'm just, I was able to pull up the reports. So only two point four percent of all of the sales tax from online, the whole county pool, there's other things in there than just online sales. But our share is two point four percent, but with the measure, we get all of our sales. So if our sales in the city are more than that two point four percent, then we would still capture all of that.
That's because we have that measure SS.
That's right, we get it directly, yes.
Because I mean, I want to make sure we all, all of our council member understand that part, because that is really important to me. I believe that's, that was kind of a you know, it's important to shed light on that, so we are all on the same page when later on, when, when it comes time to renew or when we discuss measure SS. Could you repeat that part? I just want to make sure I'm capturing all that, what you're saying. Is there anything that you're unsure that you want to go back and can do some due diligence and come back to us for, or?
I can give you more of a summary of, of the breakdown of the sales tax between the two, if you'd like.
Yes. Okay, so the measure SS tax helps us capture a hundred percent of our online sales tax, correct?
That's correct.
If measure SS goes away, we're not going to be able to capture a hundred percent of our internet sales, correct? We're only going to rely on the brick and mortar store sales tax, correct?
We will get two point four percent of the online sales within the county, so.
County pool.
Yeah, right, correct. So all of the sales from online go into the county pool. And so the cities that collect more in sales tax from the brick and mortar would get a bigger percentage of the pool. Versus our.
Aaron, is, is there any way to compare those two? You know, someone goes and spends a hundred dollars at a brick and mortar Home Depot in town versus buy something online at Home Depot. You're saying we get a portion of the county pool. Is there a way to compare those two? What percentage would we get of the brick and mortar versus the online sale for the sales tax, not the TUT? That, to me, I think is the important difference.
I can look into that. I can check with HDL to see if they can give us that breakdown. I don't know that breakdown right now, but I can certainly see if I can get it.
Yeah, because my question was, my question before, and I don't know who I asked, but I believe I might have asked our city attorney, that why are we making more in sales tax? In this COVID time, and I think that was the exact question Councilmember Ty Do asked. And so I think it's because, and I want to confirm, it's because we have the SS tax measure in play. If that goes away, we won't be able to get a hundred percent of our internet sales. See, that I want to make sure we all understand, because that, when it comes time to making the decision, we all have that information. And we will be able to make the, you know, the right decision for our town in regard to SS tax, measure tax. So is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, I was, I was actually, that was really, you know, something that, that I learned just from making this graph and I and thank you for that. If you bring some more information to us, as you said earlier, that would be great. I think this is something that we really need to, to under, to fully understand.
Okay, I, I will bring that. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. If we don't have any other concerns or question for this item, I'd like to ask City Council for action. Only receiving file.
A motion to.
A motion to receiving file.
Second.
All right, a motion and second to approve item three point four.
Receiving file. So that it was a motion made by Councilmember Manzo, followed, seconded by Councilmember Ho. To receive a report. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho? Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, next item in a consent calendar, three point five treasure report, January twenty twenty one. So I think that Council would like to have a staff report, right? Okay, so please.
So the treasures report is something that we bring monthly and it represents the the investments that the city has and Chandler Asset Management oversees our investments. But it also represents our bond funds and those are managed by Union Bank. So this is a summary, the council reviews the investment policy annually in usually October, November. It was last approved on November eleventh of twenty twenty and our investments comply with our policy.
Thank you. Erin, could you publicly state how much investment we have on on the city portfolio and bond and on that listed on the report?
Yes, ninety six, ninety seven million on the city side and two million two hundred fifty thousand on the successor agency side.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any other questions or concerns? If not, so may I ask for action? City, City Council? I'd like to move. So Councilmember Doe, second, am I right?
Yeah, I thought I'd make a motion, but yeah, I can.
Okay, so, okay, so if you make a motion, I second, that's fine.
Okay, made by Councilmember Doe, seconded by Mayor Ta to receive a report.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta? Sorry, Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have public hearings.
Public hearings. Due to COVID nineteen restrictions, changes have been made to the public hearing process in order to ensure members of the public may participate remotely. Members of the public who wish to address the city council were invited to submit comments in writing up to twenty four hours prior to the meeting. In lieu of written comments, members of the public who wish to verbally address the city council tonight may do so via Zoom. Speakers will have five minutes to speak on each public hearing item.
Item four point one, proposed water service rate adjustment for fiscal year twenty twenty one to twenty four twenty five. So may I have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I will turn the presentation to a consultant, but before that, I'd like to make a few comments here. This is our typical water rate study and review that we do every, every few years. The last time we did this was in two thousand seventeen. And then the fact that the cost of water and utilities changes all the time, we have to make sure that our charges are in line, so we don't fall behind. And therefore, we are able to provide the water service that we we need to do for the residents. We have hired Raftelli's Financial Consultants, Inc., and this is their first time with us. We have had different companies before, but this is their first time with us. So it was nice to have a fresh eyes, fresh look at the system and this we have. We enjoyed working with them. The, again, this, what you're gonna hear tonight is a minor rate adjustment. And then we used to be number three from the bottom of a seventeen year survey of the county as far as the rates. So we're one of the lowest in the county. With the proposed increase is gonna put us number four from the bottom within seventeen cities from the county. You will see that bar chart in a second. This will help pay the increased cost of water because the cost of water always increased. We pay Orange County Water District for the underground pumping and we pay the Metropolitan Water District for the imported water. So they always increase their prices. This will help us pay for that. And then also another important thing you will see in the presentation that there is a target reserve that we shoot for. So we make sure that we have a dependable system and that will definitely help us achieve that that reserve in five years. So this will be a five year adjustment rate, and then again, it's gonna be very minor, as you will see. And then also, before I turn it to the consultant, I'd like to definitely thank the staff team who worked on this. It was really a lot of work. It took a lot, some time. I'd like to thank Scott Miller, our water superintendent, who spent a lot of time on this. Also Veronica Johnson from engineering, Anna Gonzalez from water. And then the consultant you're gonna hear from tonight is Sanjay Ghar. And then I know his assistant is Michael Hicks. So I'd like to thank all these individuals who really worked on this. I think it came out a good job. And then with that, I'd like to turn it to to Sanjay. Sanjay, are you with us?
Yes, good evening, Marwan.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Same here.
Honorary mayor, city council, I'd like to conduct my presentation. I'm assuming everyone can hear, hear me relatively well.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great. I will share my screen right now. Can everyone see the screen?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, perfect. So thank you, Marwan, for those nice words. Today, I'd like to present to you our rate study for the city of Westminster. And we have a presentation here that I'll be presenting right now. So first, when we conduct the rate study, I like to talk a little bit about how we conduct it and the importance of these steps. The first thing we want to do is understand the goals and objectives of the rate study, talk about the financial reserves, as Marwan mentioned, and I'll review that in a second. The second step is to develop a model in Excel, which we actually provided to the city. They have a copy of, non proprietary, that looked at the cash flow needs. And it's similar to like a business, we're looking at the revenues coming in, expenses. We ask ourselves how much revenue we need in order to meet our operating costs to purchase water, pay for capital projects. As you may know, water is one of the most capital intensive product that it is. We don't just pay for the water, we actually pay for the ability to use it. So it's all that cost that's there. So even though we may be home right now, that water is there waiting for us to use when we want to use it. After we do the financial plan, we do a cost of service analysis. And that's really looking at the business model of the water enterprise and asking ourselves, how do we allocate those costs to customers? Once we do that, we can understand customer impacts and and I'll be showing you that. And then we get into what we call rate adoption, where we develop an administrative record, which is a report that we've developed for you, which we recommend you to have readily available. Put that on your website. It's good for transparency, helps people understand what they're paying for. And also provides you a legal defense in case somebody. Unfortunately, there's a lot of lawsuits associated with water rates these days. So we want to have that record very available so that people can look at that if they have any questions. Another aspect of a water rate study is Prop two eighteen. Prop two eighteen has twofold. One is that first, we make sure the rates are justifiable. There's not a cross subsidy. Everyone pays its fair share. Unfortunately, we can't have direct rates to subsidize certain groups of people who may socially, economically need them. Unfortunately, we can't do that with Prop two eighteen. So what we have to do is is develop the rates that meet that cost. The other aspect of Prop two eighteen is the noticing requirement, which is the forty five day noticing, which you just did. And today is a public hearing and this administrative record, which I just talked about a second ago, we want to have that. And then we get to the public hearing. So there is some legal framework associated with developing rates and we comply with those legal frameworks. The first one is the cost of service requirement with Prop two eighteen. That is in our constitution. And that basically states that there needs to be a logic and rationality with the rate structure. That basically water is a property related, that's through the court cases. And that there needs to be a logic with the rate structure and the cost of providing it. So there has to be what we call a nexus. The second side of the coin is this conservation. That's also in our constitution, California constitution. Talks about using water reasonably and beneficial use. So we want to comply with both of these policies. So there's a balancing act here between these two. Now with reserves, reserves, we're, the city has these three reserve policies, which is O and M to meet with operating expense, capital and emergency. Why do we need these reserves? Why are they important? Well, first thing is is that the city bills on an eight week period or bimonthly period. But expenses occur on a weekly or monthly period. So there's a cash flow situation. In addition, someone may use the water today. Two months later, they get a bill. I might wait a month or so to pay for it. So it's been like three, four months before I actually even pay for the water I used. So that operating is a cash flow to deal with the cash flow situation. Capital is important. As I mentioned earlier, water is the most capital intensive product there is. So there's a lot of assets. There's a lot of assets underground or storage, there's treatment plants for the groundwater. So all these costs needs to be embodied. In addition, we have an emergency fund. Five million dollars may seem a lot, but if you've talked to Marwan, he'll tell you that that's nothing if an emergency occurs. We want to have that money ready, available, just in case something goes wrong, we can fix it. We're not scrambling to try to get the money. So we can make sure that this essential service of water is available twenty four, seven, seven days a week. So now I want to get into the financial plan and talk about that. So this right over here graph shows the reserve balance that I just talked about. That's our target. And this blue bar is our ending balances with the expenditures that we expect from purchasing water from Orange County Water District, from also imported water. The Orange County Water District is the groundwater basin, also purchasing water from Metropolitan Water District via MODOC. And also to fund those capital projects I talked about, that's so important. As you can see, the ending balances is drawing down and we're not very close at all to the red line. So in order to meet that revenue, to meet the reserve target, so that we have this financial health, just in case something goes wrong and we can weather through storms, we don't have to do anything dramatic, like a significant rate increase. What we're suggesting is to do the six point five percent for the first two years, then six percent each year. About half of that is associated with the purchased water cost. That's the cost of buying the water. So you have no control of that. The other half is basically your cost to run the system. And that's that capital cost that I talked about to maintain the system. That's typical with water agencies that I work with. And it does show that you are very lean in maintaining your system. By doing those revenue adjustments, basically the blue bar starts building up and we meet the reserve target by twenty twenty five. So it's a gradual increase and we get to this financial health. So that if something goes wrong, hopefully it never does, but if something does happen, we can weather through that. And what example of something going wrong would be like an earthquake, new regulatory standards, that's something actually is occurring right now with Orange County Water District, with PFAS. So these are things that we want to be able to weather and deal with. So now we've talked about the financial plan. We did do a deep dive, looking at your cost structure, and now we're asking ourselves, how should we pay for that cost? So you have two components associated with your rates. You have a readiness to serve charge, which is based on meter size, and you have a commodity charge. The readiness to serve meter size is basically larger than meter, more instantaneous ability you can use water. Another way to look at the meter size is to think about your internet service. You may have different subscription with internet at home. Most of us may be upsized our meters, our internet speed, but the internet speed is basically your meter size. Smaller the meter size you have is just, was the most residential, smaller the amount of instantaneous water you can use. Larger the meter size, such as a golf course or a large park, more water they can use instantaneously. So based on our cost of service analysis, we determine three cost components associated with the meter size. That that's the meter cost to maintain the meter. This is the base cost to meet average winter demand, that infrastructure that, to meet that and customer service. So right here is all the different sizes of meters that you have, larger the meters, more instantaneous ability to use water. So these are very large facilities, typically malls, hospitals or large schools. These are the number size. So as you can see, most people have a five eighth inch meter. That's your typical residential customer. This is your current charge and then this is the proposed charge with the revenue adjustment that I mentioned earlier. And this is a dollar change, as you can see. So you can see as some customers see a slight increase, some see a slight decrease and some see an increase. This is typical when you do a cost of service analysis, when you realign the rates, you see these little slight changes. And again, there has to be a logic and rationality behind it. And there's a methodology to it. And I really recommend you, if you're really interested in this, to look at the administrative report that we wrote. And I can also go through that if you like, and we can talk about how those numbers are derived, if you're interested. Next is the tiers and the tier width. So you do have tier width to help promote conservation. That's, as I mentioned, in Article ten of our constitution, to use water reasonably and prevent waste. We've updated the tier widths again because when it was done last time, it was some time ago and that needed to be updated to with current usage patterns. We did it based on a five year average period for residential and hotel. And again, we looked at a five year period for commercial irrigation based on meter size. So the tier width has slightly decreased. Currently, it's twenty eight for single family now, it's twenty four. Multi-family eighteen, sixteen, hotel eight to seven. And that's typical that we've seen, people are using less and less water, being more better stewardship of the water resource. Same thing with commercial, we redefine the commercial and irrigation based again on meter size and the different use. So larger the meter, more you pay on the fixed charge and more water you can have in tier one. So we also looked at the commodity rate. We have to have a logic and rationality for that. Why are, what are you paying the higher tiers, lower tiers? We developed this logic again, looking at the supply cost, base cost, the peaking conservation. And we use peaking, which is the incremental cost to supply water during the summertime and conservation programs to help differentiate the rates. So by doing that, we get these rates and you can see the dollar changes right here. There's slight changes that you can see. And that's with, this is with commodity for residential, multi-family and hotels. We also have the same thing for commercial and irrigation. And then some of those, you again, see some changes with that. The next two charts are the Prop two eighteen notice and incremental changes that are occurring or the changes, excuse me, with the bill that's in the notice that we're asking city council to consider for adoption. And then the next chart over here actually shows the schedule for the rates for each of these different customers. Now, of course, there's a lot of information just covered. I know it's in a short amount of time. But we talked about revenue adjustment, we talked about the meter size changing. We talked about the tier width changing, we talked the commodity changing. So what does that mean to my customers? There's a lot of moving parts here. So these are the really most important slides for, I think, from the policymaker's perspective, which is the different usages. So we're showing you different usages. We're showing you the proposed bill, the current bill and the dollar change in the bill. So as you can see, most of your customers are right around here, around the twenty. They'll see a dollar thirty seven increase in their bill and this is the first year. So as you can see, it's a very mild increase. If you do use more water, some people may want, choose to do so, that you will see more of an increase and that also helps with conservation signaling and also talks, tells people about the value of the service that we're providing. As Marwan mentioned also, we did do a survey and over here shows the survey where Westminster was right over here at thirty six dollars and twenty cents. And now this is on a monthly basis, the other stuff, the other slides that showed you were bimonthly or eight week period. And now, as you can see, it's a slight increase in the order. Now, one of the challenges with ever doing a survey is is that all these different cus, all these different agencies are also increasing their rates, you know, or changing their rate structure. So I suspect after a year or two, you most likely will be back down in, in further down to the bottom. If not, or in the bottom two or three. With that presentation, if there's any questions I can answer, I'm here to do so. I'm gonna stop sharing so that we can see each other.
Really thank you for your presentation that I think that really, really detail. And I think that all members of the council really appreciate that. And one of the thanks, I'm a city manager for bringing this item up. So we all have opportunity to discuss. And one of the thanks I would say to the manager for bringing this item up. So we all have opportunity to discuss. I remember like several years ago, so please correct me if I'm wrong, like, you know, a few other city. They have to weigh into the last minute. So they could able to adjust and you know. In the last minute, they have to have really, really high in reach. And, and if compared to our city, I think we have, we have a good public work director, you know. At the time, I was, I was city manager, was a public work director. So he helped us to, you know. Have the item, you know, on time. So I mean, we don't have to weigh into the last minute. So I agree with the consultant. I mean, if we don't do anything. I mean, like when the time come, I mean, like, we don't want to have, you know, all the burden into our, into our resident. But I mean, like we slowly, you know, adjust. And I think like, you know, in a, in a few more year or. Or maybe next year, other council, they will, you know, have higher in reach than our water rate. But I really appreciate for your recall. So any other question and concern from a city council member before I open for public comment?
I have a, I have a couple of questions. So I'm looking at the staff report and I see that. You know. We get the water from Orange County Water District or we got the water from the municipal water district, Orange County? Which one are we getting? Which one the city paying?
Sanji, you want to address it or I can answer that?
It's up to you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You get it from both.
Okay.
So there, there's something called a basin percentage pumping.
Okay.
And that's what Orange County, Orange County is the cheaper water. So that's the one that you would like to use. That's the groundwater. Metropolitan's imported water and that's the water that comes from up in Sacramento and the Colorado River. And that's the more expensive water. Orange County gives you a basin percentage pumping, which is around 65%. So it says that of your demand, let's say you use 100 units, 65 can be groundwater, 35 can be imported.
And if I may add just a couple of comments, please. Yes, we do have 10 wells in the city that enable us to pump from the ground. Actually, we can pump 100% of our need, but like Sanji said, OCWD limit us to 65%. Because it's much cheaper water. The rest of the water, we get it through the Metropolitan Water District, through the Orange County. Middle man, as they said. So it's really both sources.
Okay. Okay. So we get the, we pay them to have the right to pump groundwater. Then, and it's, it consists of 65% of our water supply.
Yes.
Groundwater.
Yes.
So. Well, you know, we, we, you know, the, the resident get charged per unit of water, right? Okay. And we, we pay for per acre foot. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, so how many units equal an acre foot? Do we know?
The, the, the units are not measured per acre foot. They measure per like one year. One CCF, we call it the 748 gallons. But an acre foot really is like, I believe, I remember it's like a football field with a one foot high water. That's an acre.
Yeah. And I, I believe the, the conversion, and I'm, I'm looking right now. I should know this off the top of my head. I do this too much, but it's 456. So one acre of water equals 456 of your billing units, which are 100 cubic feet.
Yeah.
486.
Yeah. And I always get the, I'm slightly dyslexic. So I either get, it's either 456 or 465. Let me, let me check right now.
Okay, that, that's good. I think in the ballpark is good. Well, my, my question is. So how much do we mark up on the wholesale water that we purchase from Murdoch and OC Water District? Okay. So we have an average of what? $750 per acre foot? How much of a markup that we charge the resident to the customer? Double, triple?
Give me one second. I'll tell you that answer. I'm just looking it up in the report. It's actually, it's detailed in the report. So just give me one second to find it. So it costs basically a dollar 75 is the weighted average cost between Orange County and MODOC. And that's with a loss factor too.
A dollar 70. Did I hear correctly? A dollar 70?
A dollar 75. Now, so you're asking, now the question of course is, well, wait a minute, why am I paying $3 roughly? What's that additional cost? So that's the cost of the water at the well. So just imagine, you know, you're at your home right now and the well is wherever it is. So now there's an additional cost to bring that water from the well to your house. There's also additional cost to make sure the water is pressurized. So when we turn it on, we have a nice pressure. There's also additional cost to make sure the water is drinkable and it meets the EPA health and safety standards.
Oh, I totally understand. But I want to know the bottom line, how much of the percentage that we mark up to number one, pay for all the costs? And at the same time, you generate some revenue for the city.
Yeah. If, if you like, I, I get a little bit too excited about this stuff. So you have to calm me down. I can show you a chart right now that breaks it down and shows you all the components. It's up to you. If, if, if I'm, if I'm nerding out, then you just say no, just that's fine.
I always, I always want to know this. So yeah, I'm sure the resident of Westminster will be interesting in the standing.
Let me, let me just say one thing. The, the water department is subject to what he mentioned before Prop 218, which says that we can't make money off of this system. We have to operate this system as a self-sufficient system. We charge rates equal to what we need to operate the water department. To, we need to collect enough money to buy the water and do all the things that he just mentioned, and then also have a fair reserve. And we're not allowed to keep collecting and collecting. And we can't take any of this money and put it in the general fund. Because it's a self-sufficient system and that's Prop 218, which requires it. It's an enterprise fund. So just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you.
And, and so it needs to stay in that bucket. And in addition, Prop 218 says that there needs to be a logic and rationality with the rate. So I'll just share my screen again. And then I know. And you can see the screen of this PDF. And this is actually in the administrative record. So again, this should be available. So the public can digest it. And this is table 5-7, commodity rates. So here's that dollar 75. And in the prior tables in the report, we actually show the calculation of the dollar 75, how we got it. So someone can follow the math. And that's the whole point here is that there's transparency. We have the base charge, which is the cost to meet average demand. So one of the other things that most people don't think about water is that people use a lot more water in the hot summertime and less water in the wintertime. So the facilities are designed for this peak. We also use water, not all the time. We use it sometimes in the morning, in the evening. That's peak hour. There's peak day. There's peak season. So that's this peaking cost right here. So this is the peak hour. This is the peak day, peak season cost. And then we have the conservation program. The concept here is that if you are, if you use in tier two, then you should pay for the conservation program. If you're in tier one, then you shouldn't pay for the conservation program because you're doing your job. You don't need to pay for those programs. So we use these components to get to this cost of service rates. And that's the logic and justification here. So again, the, the report's very tedious. It's a lot of numbers and math. But it shows how everything's derived so that we're meeting the Prop 218 requirement that there is a nexus, there's a logic. We're not arbitrarily or capricious, that's the words that the attorneys use, designing rates.
So $1.75 is per unit of water, which is 748 gallon?
Yeah, that's, that's the, yes.
$1.75 for 740 gallon.
For 748 gallons, yes.
Yep.
So that's pretty cheap, if you think about that. You're the best deal in town, as we say.
Well, we paying a dollar per bottle of water, right?
Yes.
Like, that's, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
All right. Do we have any other question or concerns before I open up? If not, open for public hearing.
Yes, thank you. I did not receive any ecomments. However, at this time, I do have one person who would like to speak, Jody Boyd.
Hi, everybody. This is Jody. I'd like to play off of Ty Doe's last comment where we were looking at. A dollar 74 for several hundred gallons of water versus paying a dollar a bottle of water at the store. Which brings me to my question, and that is around the quality of the water that we're getting from our faucets. Now, I live fairly close to one of our wells, the one located right off of Springdale. At the edge of Indian Village. So maybe that's why our water smells and tastes a little bit more like bleach. Which I know is used to purify the water and I understand that. But I have heard, I haven't experienced this, but I have heard anecdotally. That there are people around the city who are experiencing discolored water and sediment in their water. So for our wells that we're actually pumping the water out of the ground or out of the aqua fire. What kind of filtering are we doing on the water to make sure that we're delivering pure water? With no sediment or anything to the households? And as a follow-up, if there are households that are concerned about their water quality. What is the phone number that they can call? And do we have a city engineer that will go out to their house and test their water? Right there at the entry point where the, the city water enters their house and there's usually a faucet and spigot right there.
Yes, I can answer that. This is Marwan Youssef. As far as discoloring and then if you, if you, if you see any of that, please let us know. And what we do is usually we send staff to the field and we do what we call is flushing. Sometimes if we saw there's some sediment or coloring, coloring in the system. We just have to open a nearby hydrant and flush the system. And that's typical, you know, from time to time, sometimes you have to do that. So let us know the location. I will be glad to do that. Just give me a call and I'll be glad to hook you up with the right people. And we will do that. As far as filtering, as we do not filter the water. But we take a lot of samples on a weekly basis from sampling stations just for that. To make sure the water quality exceeds, meets and exceeds the federal requirements. And they are very, very strict requirements, as Sanji know. So that should not be a problem. But yes, I agree, from time to time, people see some discoloration on some sediment. Especially if you have a construction project near the area where there's a lot of vibrations going on, a lot of machinery is going on. That could create that. But it's easy. We can just go out and flush the system nearby. That should take care of it. All right. Do we have any? Any comment from member from the public?
So I'm assuming Ms. Boyd is complete.
No.
I, I wasn't, I wasn't sure because we don't normally do the responding during the comment. So you have.
Please continue.
Yeah, you have, you have three minutes.
What's the phone number? And is it, what is the phone number for people to call? And is it on the city website under the water department? That's all.
Oh, that's, that's the last part. Okay.
Yeah.
If I may answer that?
Yes, please.
Yeah, yes, definitely call the water department for the number on the website and you'll be taken care of, no problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You so much.
All right. So next speaker is Terry Rains. Terry?
Good evening. Terry Rains, Westminster. Well, no one likes to see their water bill go up. And that is even more true now with the serious financial impacts of COVID being felt by every household and business in our community. Since I didn't see any information in the staff report about the required noticing for this increase in hearing. I emailed staff asking how many notices were sent out, how they were sent out in bills or separate mailings, when they were sent out and asked for a copy of the notice. Yesterday I received a response that 20,788 notices were mailed out on January 4th, 2021. What I wasn't sure about is whether those only went to property owners or also to tenants who have the water bill in their name. Based on comments on social media, many residents were not aware of the proposed increase or this hearing until now. I shared with staff my concern that the notices were not bold enough or eye catching. Even if the notices were sent out at least 45 days before tonight is required by Prop 218. Holding this public hearing literally on the eve of the rate increase effective date is absurd. Can someone please explain why the city is holding this public hearing just one day before the increase takes effect? On page two of the staff report, it states the new rates will be effective February 25th, 2021, which is tomorrow. In the notices mailed out, the language is the new rates will be reflected on bills starting April 20th, 2021. Taking full advantage of the fact that bills are for the prior two months. The mailer does not even mention the proposed changes to the commodity rate widths. For single family homes, the second tier will now start at anything over 24 CCF units bimonthly. As opposed to the current second tier of anything over 28 CCF units. This could greatly impact single family homes, especially during the summer with increased outdoor water use. In addition, tiers for irrigation customers are being changed substantially and will likely result in much higher bills. The mailer also does not mention that this is a five rate, five year rate adjustment. Only the adjustments for the first year are included, which go into effect tomorrow. Why was that important fact omitted? Shouldn't customers be notified that you're proposing and approving their rate? Their bills to go up every year for the next five years and by how much? So could the notice and staff report language be better? Absolutely yes. Could the mailer visual design be better? Absolutely yes. Should new rates go into effect the day after a public hearing? Absolutely not. All of these issues send the message that public testimony given here tonight is not important, will be ignored and that the city is not being fully transparent. Nor is it really encouraging public participation. I've seen over 100 comments on social media recently about the poor water quality in Westminster. Specifically, the water having an overwhelming taste and smell of bleach, a high presence of sand, rocks and other sediment. Which clog up and even damage household fixtures and appliances, and at times gross discoloration of the water. Most of the issues reported are happening on a regular basis, even some, some are even constant. Water Superintendent Scott Miller admirably asked for community input on the city's water quality recently on at least one social media page. But his response, it did not seem to satisfy the concerns of the residents. I guess you get what you pay for. According to the graph at the end of the 2020 rate study in the staff report. Westminster's typical residential water bill with the new rates is the fourth lowest among the, just the 17 Orange County cities that provide water. I question the data presented for a couple of reasons. I reviewed the most recent rate studies and rate increase notices and reports for the other cities listed. And only saw one city report a typical residential monthly bill converted from bimonthly when necessary. With only nine to 10 CCF units of water per month or 20 CCF units bimonthly. Most reported a typical residential use being from 12 to 20 CCF units monthly or 24 to 48, 40 CCF units bimonthly. And it would be nice to see a typical bill comparison of all cities in Orange County, not just those who provide water directly. Bottom line, I predict most residents will see their water bills increase by more than the projected dollar 73 this year, especially during the summer months. This is not a good time for residents to see any increase to their utility bills as most families and businesses are struggling right now due to the financial impacts of COVID. But since the majority of water customers did not file a protest, this five year, five year water rate increase for most will be approved tonight. I do hope the city will consider the constructive feedback I presented here tonight. And incorporate some changes into the noticing and hearing process for future proposed rate adjustments. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for speakers. All right, I have no additional speakers.
All right. So if we don't have any other speaker, I'd like to close public comment. And now, council action.
First, first may I say that, um, thank you, Mayor. First, may I say that can we, I know Marwan, you said you're going to look into, but can we really get out there and look into these reports of the water quality?
Absolutely. Tomorrow, tomorrow morning, I will dispatch staff to that location. I know where that location is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And also, do we know? I don't remember seeing a notice in my mail. Do we know? Can we address the comments made about the notices being sent out?
Yeah, yes, we do. We do use a professional company to do the printing and do the mailing of these notices. Unfortunately, some, some people misses that, you know. It's just like, it's a one sheet folded on both, both sides printing. So some people tend to, I guess, miss that, but but the majority of the people do definitely get it and realize that. But unfortunately, some people do miss that because it's just, they think it's one of the advertisement flyers and all that stuff.
Okay.
So I have a question. So by law, that a city only require to send out notice? Are regarding this made only one time, right?
Yes, by law, we are required to send it forty-five days before the public hearing.
So that require forty-five days?
Yes, forty-five days, and then we've done that.
Okay, so that by law, okay.
Yes.
Mayor, just to add to that, in addition, we do notice because of the fact that this is a public hearing, it does get noticed in the newspaper as well.
Oh, okay. Are you talking about OC register or something?
No, we, it generally circulated within the city, so we always use the Westminster Herald-Journal.
Got it. Okay. All right. All right, council. Any comment? Any action? So what would the city council like to do about this item?
It sounds like that we have, I mean, Marwan, basically, we have, we're just covering the cost by law to pay for the water service and pumping and all the, all the costs associated with getting the water to our residents. By law, the city, we cannot be making money on this, so it sounds like as long as its services and the costs keep going up, we basically have no choice as far as what, what we, what our residents pay. I mean, we just have to, we had to pay what it costs to get the water to every home, correct?
That is correct, yes. And this, these money cannot be used for anything else except for providing the water service to the residents.
Appears, appears that we're, as council, we're just, we're, we have, we're just stuck paying for, for, for residents paying for what it costs to get it there, so we're pretty, pretty much have no choice.
So we did, we did comply with the, the regulation that we sent out, the notices before forty-five days, right?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
Okay, with all that, I move to approve that. Second.
Okay.
So I have a motion made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Mayor Ta, and that's to approve the resolution?
Correct.
Okay, so that's going to be to adopt a resolution entitled A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster rescinding Resolution Number 4972 and adopting administrative rules and regulations for the city water system pursuant to the MISCO Code approving a rate adjustment to the current water rates effective February 25th, 2021. Councilmember Doe?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Ho?
No.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries three-two with Councilmembers Doe and Ho voting no.
All right. Next item. Regular basis. Allocation of fund for rent funded local roadway safety plan from the Traffic Impact Fee Fund.
Mayor, would you like a staff report on that?
Please.
Okay, Adolfo, are you, are you with us, Adolfo? Would you like to make that or I can do it?
Absolutely, Marwan.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, this is essentially a grant that the city competitively obtained from Caltrans. The local roadway safety plan is a federal requirement that's passed down to the states. And as such, the states have passed down similar recommendations to local government. The biggest thing to take away from this is that eighty, it's an eighty thousand dollar, it's a seventy-two thousand dollar grant with a ten percent match. And this will, is a prerequisite for us to be able to compete for grant funding within the state system. The HSIP Highway Safety Improvement Program requires that we have an approved LRSP before we compete for grant funds. And just to give you some perspective, over the last fifteen years, we've probably obtained more than six million dollars from that HHSIP program. In addition to the funding, it's a very good opportunity for us to see what the current state of our roadway system is and as such, be able to plan for safety improvements. That concludes my report.
All right, city council, do you have any question or concerns for this item?
I have a question as far as can you give us an example of what kind of safety improvements we can, we can do that typically would come up like?
Absolutely. Yes, we've, we've done a phenomenal job over the years of building out our, our circulation system. As an example, the Highway Safety Program has allowed us to build landscape medians along Bolsachica Road, along Westminster Boulevard, along Bosa. And by, by building in these medians, of course, we have, we experience a reduction of speed and as our police can affirm, a reduction in certain types of traffic collisions that are preventable with that type of an improvement. On Rancho, for example, we obtained grant funds there where we had what we referred to as a soft shoulder, where you essentially have pavement that leads directly to dirt and doesn't have curb and gutter. So in that particular corridor, we implemented a two-way left turn lane and we implemented the infrastructure improvements, which would be essentially a curb and gutter section along the entire roadway segment. It's given us an opportunity, and this has come up at our traffic commission meetings, and I know Mayor Ta and I have talked, Mayor Ta and I have talked about this over the years, is protected left turn phasing. So we've done a really good job over the years of using this funding to implement traffic signal modifications that introduce protected left turn phasing. And we've been able to do these improvements in areas where schoolchildren are regularly crossing those intersections, such as the intersections over by Westminster High School and the intersection adjacent to La Quinta High School. Those are just a few things that come to mind that are examples of that grant funding that comes specifically from that project, from that, excuse me, from that grant program.
I think, and also with the consultant that's going to be hired, is he going to take the whole eighty thousand or is, or just a portion of that?
You know, the, after, for the size of city that we have, we're going to be able to get a lot done with the seventy-two thousand, with the eighty thousand. And we'll be able to look at other measures, to kind of think outside the box, spend some time looking at residential streets that typically are not looked at with these types of programs. Typically, you're looking at majors and secondary highways. But with the eighty thousand dollars that I have planned is to really look outside those major corridors and look at corridors that may have been overlooked over the years, such as like in the Sigler Park area where we have very wide streets, a lot of multifamily housing. Typically, those areas are not considered in these types of analyses, but with eighty thousand dollars, we're definitely going to be looking at those corridors.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any more question?
I have a question, Adolfo. Um, you know, recently I noticed there's a lot of fatality, traffic accident that happened around the Golden West and Westminster area, a couple of fatalities that happened within the past couple of months. And also on the stretch of State Highway, Beach Boulevard, around Hazard, between Hazard and Bosa. Is any way that we can do something to revan, you know, to save some of those life being lost? All special pedestrian vehicle laying. Is there any way that we can use this kind of funding to do that?
Very good question, sir. I think I would invite Deputy Chief to jump in if he, if he feels it's appropriate. I will tell you that statewide and countywide during COVID, the entire region is experiencing a higher rate of speeding, traffic collisions, particularly pedestrian and bicycle collisions. I think there's the onset of electric bicycles, the onset of scooters. We're starting to see a lot of that. I think more kids and, and adults tend to be home during the pandemic, so there's, there's really a lot going on during this pandemic that, that it's more than meets the eye when, when it comes to, to how our roadways are being used on a regular basis. We work really closely with the Police Traffic Bureau. And one of the primary things that we, we do is on every traffic collision that happens that involves either property damage or injury, we work together to, we meet at the site, we assess the conditions, and of course, we wait for the police to do their reporting to determine the primary collision factor. So if there is something at a location that we find dangerous that can be corrected, a missing sign, things that I think that, that, that we encounter, we correct that immediately. What this study is going to do is it's going to assess traffic collisions throughout the city over a period of years so that we can really identify areas that have what we consider to be systemic issues. It's not a DUI, it's not a distracted driver, but it's rather segments in the city that may have a true history of traffic collisions. And, and it's those locations that, that are grant eligible. Would you like to add anything else, Deputy Chief?
No, I know the two areas that Councilmember Doe mentioned are high collision areas that our traffic bureau, especially our motors, focus in on. And we do a good job working with Adolfo and his crew and kind of working together to mitigate any any traffic fatalities or high number of traffic collisions that occur in that area, especially involving pedestrians, and we have seen an increase lately with that. So we're always exploring different options to do with the traffic bureau to, to better deal with those.
You know, it's, it's been, this has been a while, at least a couple of years. And that's where I noticed the two areas on the stretch of beach and between Bosa and Hazard, it's a couple of fatality happening there. And then a couple of weeks ago at the Bosa and, I'm sorry, Westminster and Golden West, a couple of pedestrians get hit, run over. I don't, I don't know the detail, the the collision factor as to what happened. But we need to, do we need a council agenda or is there anything that we can do to look into that? And maybe, you know, maybe it's lighting signage enforcement or whatever to kind of reduce the fatality. This is simply very consistent, late at night, pedestrian crossing the streets.
Well, we can definitely assess the conditions on a more regular basis. I know that our traffic signals, for example, are assessed on a monthly, on a monthly basis. And in fact, once a month, we pay a traffic signal technician to visit all of the traffic signalized intersections in the city to make sure that the safety lights are working. We can pay more attention to potentially maybe Southern California Edison lighting. So we can definitely revisit those corridors. And that doesn't require council action. We can take care of that administratively. But as far as getting this project with the local roadway safety plan moving, we will be able to start looking at these trends. And, and like I said, over the course of a few years, we'll compile all this data. And this data comes directly from our police department. We're very lucky that they welcome us into their building. They help us pull the data. We, 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 we work very closely with their, with our, with Sergeant Weber and his team over at the police department. So we will, we will definitely be reporting back to council as to where these areas of improvements may be found through the course of this study.
Beach Boulevard, is that the state highway, isn't it?
That's correct.
Can we, can we have them get involved, Caltrans, to set up some kind of lighting on the stretch of the cemetery on the area? It seems like very dark and seems like a couple of fatality that happened in that area in the past. And is you get data, the, the collision factor to those fatality to, as confidential information through the council?
Absolutely. Our police department are responsible for reporting and collecting information on all traffic collisions on Beach Boulevard. They also do an excellent job of speed enforcement on, on Beach Boulevard. So that data on Beach Boulevard will be a part of the study, even though it is a Caltrans roadway. The traffic signals are shared maintenance, so although they're operated by Caltrans, the city of Westminster pays a share into the lighting and operations of those signals. So we definitely have a say in, in, in how the corridor operates. One of the other things I did want to point out is that Caltrans has put quite a bit of money into the corridor. There are some sidewalk improvements, lighting improvements, median modifications that have taken place over the last, I would say, five years as part of ongoing efforts that Caltrans has done. So they are, they're keeping up with, with the newest regulations that are, that come from the federal, from the Federal Department of Transportation.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Deputy Chief.
All right. Do we have any other question? If not, I move approval. Recommended.
Second.
Thank you. That was motion made by Mayor Ta, seconded by Councilmember Doe, and move is approved to allocate eighty thousand dollars for the grant-funded local roadway safety plan, our LRSP from the Traffic Impact Fee Fund. Real call vote, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next item, 6.1 Urgency Ordinance relating to temporary moratorium on commercial eviction.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. At the last, at the last meeting, the council was considering the potential adoption of an urgency ordinance that would have extended the current commercial eviction protections until February 28th, at which point they would terminate. The council had a long discussion about it, and they expressed concern at the end of that that the ordinance, as currently written, didn't provide tenants enough time to repay past due amounts. The current ordinance, or the one that was adopted originally back in March, only allowed four months to repay. But that ordinance originally was only intended to last about two and a half months. So there was direction given to have me prepare two different versions of the ordinance, which I've done for tonight's meeting, that they're attached to the agenda to the staff report. Both versions of this ordinance would have the protections end at the end of the day on February 28th. The two, the differences between the two is in version one essentially just has some just has some language in, it encourages the landlord and the tenants to come to a mutually agreeable arrangement in order to repay the past due rent. So that would be the preferred method. But if that can't, that doesn't work, uh, if an agreement cannot be reached, then the tenant would be allowed up to twenty-two months to repay those amounts. And then it doesn't go on any further than that. It's the same as was presented last time. Uh, version two is exactly the same. It has the exact same language, however, with a couple of changes. One, instead of twenty-two months, it has twelve months to repay. And of course, the council could move this number around if you want. It could be eight months, it could be fourteen months. But I put twelve months because that seemed to be a reasonable amount. You would be given twelve months to repay the past due amounts. But in addition, I added a paragraph that would require the tenant to start making certain minimum payments, like starting March first. Uh, that would include two things. One, starting on March first, the tenant would have to begin to pay their current monthly rent in full. So they're no longer getting behind. Uh, and on top of that, they would have to pay at minimum, they could pay more, but at minimum, one twelfth of the amount that was passed due. Uh, and that that way, over a period of twelve months, they'd eventually get caught up with whatever was passed due as of March first. So those are the two versions that are before you. Again, you could, if you choose, you go to shorter or longer. I did do a, a survey of the surrounding cities uh, to see what they're doing. Um, a number of them, uh, including Fountain Valley, Huntington Beach, Los Alamos. Let me see who else here. And Newport and Stanton do not have an eviction uh, protection for commercial tenants. They don't have one. Um, Santa Ana does, that one is tied to the governor's order, similar to the way ours is. Um, Huntington, uh, no, not Huntington, uh, Garden Grove has one that is also tied to the governor's order. Um, Fullerton does as well. And let's see here, Anaheim and Buena Park and Costa Mesa have ordinances. So as you can see, it's kind of across the board. Some do, some don't. Most of those um, allow repayment periods of either a hundred and twenty days or six months. Um, again, they may not have addressed this issue, uh, as you are, that you recognized at the last meeting, that maybe there's not enough time in there. But that's, those are the timeframes that are in their ordinances, anywhere from a hundred and twenty to six months. I think, I think twelve months is definitely supportable. Um, people need time, and it has gone on longer than I think was originally anticipated. Um, so with that, I would submit it to the council to discuss and decide what you want to do.
Really, one of the things, our City Attorney for your uh, report, I think that it really helped uh, all of us understand what in the uh, ordinance, yeah. So, uh, remember the City Council?
Yes, I can, I, I really thought about it, and I really think uh, version two, I could support version two. I like what you put in B, uh, the language that you added. And um, and give the tenants twelve months to repay past due amount. And I think that's something that is um, really um, a win for both tenants and landlords. Really encourage landlords to give the tenants an opportunity to work with them. So I can support, I can really support version two.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, I know that we have a lengthy discussion uh, last uh, meeting already, so with that, I uh, move to approve uh, motion two on.
Before you go to uh, to your action real quick. Okay, so we, we uh, blip the uh, eviction, right, restriction from landlord, is that correct? And, but then we regulate the, how long the tenant uh, civilly can uh, pay, pay back, back to the past due rent, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And what if they cannot afford to pay the rent, the past due? They get evicted anyway, or they get protected?
It's really, ju- as a general rule, it's not our role to decide when or if a tenant is evicted. That's going to be the landlord working something out with the tenant. In some cases, they may work something out, may want to hold off. The, in other cases, they may want to seek to evict them if they can't pay, yes.
Okay, but, but we want to regulate how much the uh, how long uh, the tenant can pay back the uh, past due rent.
Yes, that, that's, that's the language that I added. It, the idea being that we've gone through a, a very difficult time and that the tenant has, must have proven that these are COVID related impacts. And now we're just talking about what they owe for that period that, for the past eleven, twelve months. And they're going to repay that. We're going to, because it occurred during an emergency, we're going to, as part of our emerg- urgency ordinance, say that landlords cannot force them uh, or cannot evict them based on the fact that they haven't paid that back. And we're, we're giving them twelve months to repay it. But giving them certain minimum payments they must make in order to avail themselves of those protections.
Okay, so we protect the tenant from being evicted if they maintain a minimum payment?
Yes, as set forth in the ordinance.
Okay.
But if they don't pay their current rent, then that would not give them any protection at all. So this is only about the past due rent.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, I think that we have a motion on the floor, make my Vice Mayor, am I correct?
Yes.
For the uh, second version, am I correct?
For the second version of the ordinance, uh, number two, five, seven, one.
I think they are the same number, am I correct?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Same number.
Okay, so uh, any second for that yet?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and second for the second version uh, ordinance number two, five, seven, one. Motion second on the floor.
Okay, so that's a motion made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Councilmember Ho, and it is to adopt urgency ordinance number two, five, seven, one, version two, entitled, an urgency ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, amending urgency ordinance number two, five, six, five, relating to a temporary moratorium on commercial evictions and declaring the ordinance to be an emergency measure to take effect immediately upon adoption, read by title only and away further reading. Councilmember Do?
Councilmember Do, can you unmute?
Yeah, thank you, sir. Um, yeah, I agree with the uh, lifting up the eviction restriction. Uh, but I disagree with the uh, with the city regulating how long that the tenant has to pay the landlord. I think that's a civil deal, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Councilmember Ho?
Yes, I vote yes, and the reason I vote yes is because there, we um, back in March, I'm sorry, back in um, May or June, we approved for the back pay to be paid over a period of four months. And um, so therefore, we need to address the back pay. And so that's why I approve for it to be twelve months, and I think that's a really good, reasonable situ- um, uh, time, timeframe for them to repay. Now that we are lifting and we are no, no longer going with the state um, moratorium. Looking that um, that would end our state moratorium on eviction on commercials.
Okay. Councilmember Manson?
I vote yes for the reason, um, to, I mean, we need to support our businesses as much as possible. Um, I don't want to see our businesses fail. Very tough time for everybody, and any support we can give them, I'm, I'm willing to do that, so yes.
Okay. Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Right, motion carries four, zero, one, with Councilmember Do abstaining.
All right, uh, next we have a common and request for agenda item from City Council Agency members, including AB one, two, three, four, report when required. So uh, Vice Mayor Nguyen?
I have nothing for today, so thank you very much.
All right, so next, Councilmember Do.
Oh, thank you very much. Um, I just want to, I stand my um, to congratulate Chief Lotterback to um, to be the new Chief of Police for the City of Cypress. And I uh, wish him uh, luck. And I thank you for your service, uh, serving the City of Westminster for over two decades at the Westminster PD. I would like to, you know, since we have new leadership in uh, in the City Hall, and soon we're going to have a new Chief of Police in the, the Police Department. I would like to put an item on the agenda to direct the City Manager, Mr. Yusup, to uh, um, review all this uh, city policy from the City Hall and the PD and make the, all the necessary revise, revision uh, based upon um, at the conclusion of your uh, study, so that we can have a uh, consistency of service and efficiency for the city staff. Thank you.
So we have a request from Councilmember Do, uh, ask a City Manager to review all the city policy and city ordinance, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, I honor that request.
I have a question, I have a question about it.
Please.
Uh, if we're talking about reviewing all policies related to that or all par- city policies, I don't know how many uh, city policy are there. And I don't know how long it's going to take him to, to review. Uh, i- is this going to be in time for, for him to hire the new uh, CD um, I mean, um, the chief, so, you know, I, I, I guess that, you know, uh, if we could, then we probably uh, direct uh, you know, City Manager to review what is related to.
Councilmember Do, are you willing to, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Nguyen, Councilmember Do, I think Council, Vice Mayor Nguyen, uh, gave a really valid point, is there any way that you can like narrow your request, if you don't mind?
My, my concern is uh, to have the uh, this new City Manager have an opportunity to look closely at all the city policy and make some necessary recommendation to change to the City Council. And at that point, we can talk about uh, what we want, what we don't want.
But I think that it will involve our City Attorney, am I correct, City Attorney? But and, and it would take a lot, a lot of time, because we have a lot of policy.
It's going to take a few weeks, if not months, to uh, uh, been, you know, to basically uh, um, policy is a holy land that we have. And the city policy is very important to protect city employees, city staff, and the public, so.
So I let, I, before, you know, we have action from the City Council for the future item consideration. I'd like to have input from uh, City Attorney, because you know, he uh, I think that he really familiar with all the city policy of Westminster. City Attorney?
Yeah, I, I, I think the only thing with this is that it does seem a bit broad. I mean, that could take a, a long time. There's a lot of policies involved, um, potentially. So if there's a way to narrow it, um, but I guess, I mean, we could put the item on the agenda and discuss it at the next meeting.
Sure.
Okay, so uh, I honor that request, but I mean, like, I hope Councilmember Do understand that it would take a lot of time.
Oh, absolutely. We can put the agenda, we can talk a little bit on, discuss that.
All right, so that's to uh, direct the City Manager to review all key and silly, silly City Hall policies. Um, and add, add that to future agenda. Okay?
No, I think, I think the issue is to put it on the agenda to talk about instructing him to do it. So that would be at the next meeting.
Okay. And that's City Hall and PD, right?
Yes.
Yes.
That had nothing to do with ordinances though, right? Because I didn't hear ordinances, and okay, okay. Perfect. All right, so Councilmember Do?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Hey, motion carries five zero to add that to future agenda.
All right, Councilmember Do, are you done?
I am done. Thank you very much, uh, the city staff for your hard work. Thank you.
All right, next, Councilmember Ho.
Yes, I really, um, I regret that we lost another good person, uh, Chief Lotterback, Chief Police. So um, that is um, really a sad time. I think I thought we were, um, that we got a good, good chief. But that was very short lived. So that was to my regret. And um, this time, I don't have an agenda to add, um, and I'd like to thank staff for um, taking the time to um, hit um, all the details together um, regarding uh, the um, the possibility of doing something with um, for the business community um, with the county's um, possible county fund that we will be getting. And I hope to hear more um, from you the next time. Um, and I hope that you will have more time to prepare. You know, that gives you two more weeks to prepare a lot more details to present to us. I'm really looking forward to that. Thank you very much for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ho, and Councilmember Manzo.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Um, first, I want to report that I completed another round of ethics training virtually uh, last week, so I'm caught up to that. Uh, next, I want to also want to thank uh, Police Chief Mark Lotterback for his service for, to our city. I also too regret seeing him go. I thought he was going to be with us for a while, but I wish him well. I wish him luck. Right to, when he works at City of Cypress, they, they got a good chief on with them. So congratulations to City of Cypress. Um, next, I want to talk to you, I want to see if the council can support me on passing a resolution condemning hate. The hate crimes, uh, racism and bigotry to all, all forms of it, to all peoples. But lately, um, seems like ever since COVID nineteen hit us, there's been a really upswing on hatred and violence against our Asian community um, all over our state. Um, it's up. Uh, Orange County alone is up to a hundred percent. And I want to hopefully um, urge residents and maybe our city staff can help us um, to put information out there on our website, or wherever, all our means of communication, to urge residents to report any, any incidents of uh, hate crime in our city. And I just want to pass a resolution, uh, hopefully we can maybe put her on the next agenda for, to condemn these acts of violence against all peoples in our community. Um, so that's, I don't know if that's an agenda item. Uh, that's one, one that I have. I don't know if you can get support from council on that one.
So any Councilmember, uh, second for that request?
My second.
Okay, so we have the motion and uh, second that required for, for next meeting, am I right? Okay.
Yeah, put on agenda for the next meeting.
Right. That's to place an item on the agenda for a resolution condemning hate crime, racism and bigotry.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Do?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Next, in the spirit of cleaning up our city, I know our city needs some work. I want to put on the agenda, hopefully, council, it's just, just to talk about it, not, not actually doing, just to have a conversation about reducing the size of temporary signs. Currently, we have our sizes, I think it's thirty-two square feet, which is kind of large. As you guys may know, especially during campaign season, we get, our city gets pretty crazy with all those million signs out there. And then there's a lot of work putting them up, and especially taking them down. It seems to kind of put our city alight. And those, those metal stake that we used, people used to put them up. They seem to stay up for a few years, and it's kind of stayed there for the next cycle. But I think, I think in the spirit of leading by example, I think us people, you know, current, current council or future candidates can lead by example and and keep our city clean by reducing the size of the signs. And also too, it kind of helps to put every, keep candidates on a more even playing field. You know, some candidates may not be able to afford to buy those big giant signs and kind of, kind of balances things out. So maybe just for discussion purposes for next, next, doesn't have to be next one, but whenever, next council, next council meeting. But just to have a conversation about reducing, reducing the signs, the size, the size of signs, temporary signs.
You're talking about campaign size or?
Any, 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 I think it's any size, any size, really. Not necessarily just campaign, but any, any size, temporary signs.
Okay, all right, a second.
So what, what, I try to understand, you just want to bring it up so that we can just discuss about it, but that you don't want to take anything after that? Is that what you're saying?
No, well, I'm hoping to have a discussion about it, and hopefully that we can come to a, a conclusion if we, if there's something council wants.
Okay, then, then, then that, that's not only a discussion. Item that you, you want to bring up.
So I want to put it up for discussion if the council chooses to, to reduce, then we reduce.
It's a discussion. You want an action item? We're going to take action?
Do you want to do an action item now? I don't know if we, can we do that, city attorney?
Also, one, and yes. Okay, you want, you want to order staff to come up with a city policy to deal with size?
Yeah.
Every size or whatever?
I want to reduce the size limit. Currently, I think it's thirty-two square feet.
I think a discussion, a discussion would be best first, and then you could instruct me to prepare an ordinance that accomplishes whatever you guys decide.
Yeah, correct. I just want a discussion.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay, so that is a motion to place an item on the agenda to discuss reducing the size of temporary sign. Okay, Councilmember Do?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, Councilmember Manzo, anything else?
Yeah, lastly, I want to thank, I don't know if you, council is aware of, I don't know, residents are aware, we had a a pipe leak, a water leak not too long ago. I just want to thank the water team for jumping into action, taking care of that for us in-house, and that was really you know, really good of them to keep the cost down. I think the water team, I think I want to, Scott, Tony, Carlos, Joe, Nick, Super Mario, and Joseph, thank you very much for jumping into action and taking care of that, taking care of that for us. I really appreciate it. Lastly, I just want to thank staff for all your hard work and your support, you know. Thank you, thank you all for your, for your hard work. Thank you, council, for your hard work as well.
Thank you for your other comment. And for my report, I don't have anything to report, but I, I'd like to wish our chief of police well. I had a great opportunity to work with him for, I think, more than a decade. At a time when he was like surgeon, and then he moved up to be lieutenant and captain, and then chief of police. I think he worked really well. He helped obviously a lot, so I really appreciate that. And also, thanks our city manager, my one Yusef, and city attorney, mission for working as a team to advise our city council with a lot of issues, really, I really thank you for it. And with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, March ten, twenty, twenty-one at seven PM. Oh, I forgot. City manager, you have anything to report? Mr. Mayor, nothing really to report. I just want to thank the mayor and the council members for the opportunity for me to step in and, and be the city manager. And I know we have a lot of items to work on, but they are doable, they are workable, and we're going to work on it as one team, and then I will do my best. And anything I can do to help any of you, please let me know. I think one of the things that what I'm going to try to do is cover the, the agenda, the items on the agenda before each, each council meeting. So I can make sure you have all your questions answered, and anything you need, just let me know. And again, thanks for the opportunity to serve. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you so much for that. So next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, March ten, twenty, twenty-one at seven PM. You adjourn. Thank you.